Can we please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be on Channel Nine. It's being, it should be shown right now, and it will be uploaded to YouTube. Dr. Z is a little sick today, so he won't be at tonight's meeting. Our next meeting is February twenty-sixth at seven P. M. Announcements. Early voting for the presidential primary will begin on February twenty-fourth through to twenty-seventh, so beginning next Monday from seven-thirty to four-thirty P. M. in the lower level, people will be able to come in and vote, and the primary election is on March third. Memorial Day Parade planning open meeting is set for February twenty-seventh at seven P. M. in the Old Town Hall upper level. A townwide parking ban is still in effect until April first. No person shall allow any vehicle to remain industries who has to obstruct snow removal. Police will take notice. I was gonna joke about the snow, but I'm probably gonna jinx us, so I'm not gonna talk about the snow. The town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held next, uh, March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, located in the lower level of the town hall. There's no public here, so there won't be any public input, and I'm ask-
Mr. Chairman, just, just the Memorial Day Parade planning meeting that's on February twenty-seventh. We are still looking for input from residents. Do you want a parade, or do you want just a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park? You can either call into town hall, or send an email, contact anybody here at town hall, or just come to the meeting. Also, you can contact Mr. Hershey, the veterans agent. We just need some responses. Thank you.
And I've asked that that be posted as a selectmen's meeting, because you and I will both be attending on that meeting. Town administrators' report?
Good evening. Um, the first update is something we've spoken about previously, so I won't have too much to say other than our vehicle charger, electric vehicle charging stations are, um, the footings are being put in now. The concrete will be poured and set by the end of the week. Um, big thanks to Mrs. Brady and Building Commissioner Jim Aguirre and the Highway Department for putting that all together. And the crux of my update is that previously we had spoken about National Grid giving a sizable rebate back for this, which exceeded what we planned on spending through our Green Communities designation funds, and we do not have to return that to the state. It essentially just frees up some of the designation funds that we had already just earmarked for the electric vehicle charging stations. Um, however, we do need to complete the other projects that we said we would complete, which are their three other projects, before we can access those funds. So they're basically on hold, but that's still good news for us.
It is. Thank you.
And let's see, next is the organizational chart. I made the changes that you had discussed last time that this came up. My only, um, I sort of wanna bring to light the animal control officer. I have it here under the Board of Health, because right now, um, they are sort of overseeing her, but when I compare this to the budget and I look at the budget, um, she's under the Public Safety Group, so I don't know if we want to examine that, if we want to, um, hold off on this, if we wanna think about this, or just pass this, approve this, um, with the, you know, expectation, I guess, of reevaluating that. Um, I, I don't know how you feel about it, so I wanted to bring it to light. It is under the Board of Health here, but, um, listed as a Public Safety.
So if we were to make that change, will we have the Board of Health come in here also, and have the animal control officer come in, to get their input on it?
So at our next meeting, they're all scheduled to come in, um, because they're presenting their budgets. So I thought I'd bring it up tonight in anticipation of that, and you could discuss that with them, um, if you so desire.
I did review the chart. I, I like the chart the way it's set up now.
And did you see it in color? It, right now, it, have you seen it in color? No? All right, so we'll, uh, it's not like super fancy, but it's much more readable.
It's the dark spot, the town of Dayton.
It says that the red, um, was it voters, town of Dayton voters, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Voters of the town of Dayton. Elected is orange, and all the appointed are blue. I don't, I'm not-
Can I give this to, uh, because I can read mine. I'll give this to you. I'll get, I'll get a copy of it at some point.
As I look at this, there's also something else I think we should have a conversation about. Um, it's not on the agenda tonight, but it's wrapped in with budgeting, and this, I do think that, in this chart, I do think that we should consider, um, merging the treasure and collector positions into one, or have the conversation.
So is that something that would have to go before the town then?
That would. Um, so that would be a change of your structure, and they would have to, I believe it's a ballot vote, as well as a town meeting vote.
So do we have to do home rule petition?
Um, I'm not sure on that. Maybe.
Are you talking about leaving them elected positions, because we talked about combining them also?
I personally believe it should be appointed. Just be, that's a D O R recommendation. There's school and, school involved that they go to for training, and you have to be a sitting treasure collector for two years. So if there's an elected thing, it, you know, you don't know what you're gonna get, and you limit your pool, because it's just Dayton residents. Um, not saying there's anything wrong with that, but just, it leaves us open to, um, you know, not having the certificates available to us. So I think it should be appointed. We've briefly talked about that when we had the Governance Committee in here. They were supposed to, uh, originally look at that to see how the town felt about it. I know that this has come up previously. Um, at this moment, I'm really just asking us to consider merging the two. However, if you're gonna do a home rule petition, it makes sense to do everything that you're looking for at once, but perhaps that can become part of the conversation. And I didn't ask the treasurer, the current treasurer, her thought about that.
The problem is, those are separate elected-
Yes.
-positions, and you could have three, like, I think Berkeley has three people.
Right.
You know, so-
Three separate people then?
I think because they are all elected positions, we'd have to find out, aside from appointed, is it possible to combine them into one elected position? I don't have answers to that.
Treasure collector.
The only question I have is, um, when I looked at this, under the police chief, should the sergeants, should there be a link between the sergeants and the patrolman?
Yes, I, like a little line.
A line between the two. Leave them, leave them on the, the main line, but there's a connection there.
Similar to how I have building inspector in the pla, if you just look to the left, I have the plumbing inspector in that line.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I suppose that's actually wrong, though. The wiring inspector is not overseen by the plumbing, so I'm gonna change that as well, too.
Yeah, that'd actually be side by side.
Yeah, they should be side by side. Oh, I'm gonna have to upgrade my size. No more ledger. I couldn't be able to do it. So would you like us to, would you like us to hold off on this until next meeting, when you have a more vivid discussion about the animal?
Yeah, well, I, I think we need to know, uh, what Dr. Z thinks about, if he's got any changes. Maybe under that building inspector, you could have two smaller boxes and put T G I, and then next to it, W I with asterisks down the bottom, just indicate what those are. I wouldn't change the whole, the setup is good. You just need little boxes, and since you can't get all that wording in, I just, I just use, uh-
Well, I can do some things. If you look up to the library director, I had to kinda get fancy with that and elongate it, so I can maybe drop it down a little bit lower and do that. I'll play with it, see how it looks, but that's, that's no problem. I can.
So we wanna be, uh, ready for this, for annual town meeting to discuss the treasure collective becoming an appointed position? We're not ready for that. Is that?
Barely. We would barely be. I mean, you could do it, I asked the, um, town clerk if we could add something to the state ballot, so that, not the state ballot, it'd be our version of what people were voting on, so that it would be just one election and not an extra cost. And I don't think we can do that. We could add it to the town, um, election ballot in April, however, that's a very, I have to give error the question thirty days, so you, we would have to know by next week. I don't know if that's enough time.
Oh, I just thought of one. We recognized, uh, Chris Reddy for being the Graves Officer. Does he come under Veteran Services or the Cemetery Commission?
I believe Veteran Services.
I don't believe it's the Cemetery Commission.
Okay, so we probably should figure out where to stick him.
Is he paid for that?
No. Are these only?
Well, not all these people are paid. I was just looking through that, um.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I, I believe all of these positions might be paid positions. Trying to look for somebody who's not, but I'll, um, I'm just gonna-
Well, the town historian, historical commission, it's not paid, cemetery commission.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I, I agree that we should, uh-
Add a Graves Officer.
Graves Officer, but we'll, we'll wait for Dr. Z to, uh, to finalize this.
Just draw a little thing, Graves Officer.
You did a very good job on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks good.
I like how even it looks. Um, I was actually very surprised about that, just because, that's just by chance.
Well, you know, when you put this on paper like this, you really look at this and say, wow, that's a lot of people. You don't think of that. I realize that some people would fill a number of these boxes, because they have so many, um, titles, but, uh, it's a lot of positions that you have to cover.
Takes a lot to run a small town.
Yeah.
And this isn't even anything, like, this doesn't count your ad hoc committees. Um, so it's nice. It's a nice visual, I think. And also, it's helpful, in my opinion, for any new business coming in, any new resident, to know who does what and who falls under what. And, um, it's a good, just a, a nice tool, in my opinion. Hopefully others agree.
What about the housing authority? I know that-
They're there. They're all the way to the left, at the top.
Oh, okay. All right.
And I don't know why, but my regional school district committee has a bigger box, and I have to fix that.
Small words, that's why it's, it's bigger. You can shrink the Board of Selectmen, too, if you want.
Well, I have them bigger, I have you bigger in purpose. Even less authority.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, table action on this, uh, staff diagram until the next meeting, when Dr. Z can, uh, offer his opinion on it.
I'll step down and second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Uh, my last update is about the Aquaria property. There was a newspaper article a little while ago mentioning that the city of Brockton might be interested in purchasing Aquaria, uh, which is, I won't, I don't wanna say troubling to us, but of concern. We wanna know about that. So, uh, we grabbed the, I think Select and Goulit actually grabbed for me the planning board decision, and payments are supposedly in this agreement, in this decision, guaranteed through two thousand and twenty-six. So I sent that over to council to determine how much teeth that has, um, going forward, and he suggested sending a letter of Aquar, to Aquaria, reminding them of the stipulation on their, um, even being in existence in our town, and that they are still beholden to that. I also asked him about instituting an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Brockton to try to continue payments, since they are taking up such a sizable piece of property on a valuable piece of land. Um, so that would be up to you if you wanted to continue action on that.
Okay, I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing. And the other thing that I had mentioned in that, that talked about taxes, there's an agreement that Aquaria will install a connection to the North Dayton, excuse me, to the Dayton Water District Building as an emergency backup. And it almost reached the point of being done, uh, when I was on the board the last time. Mr. Ferry says, I remember that. I was all ready to start digging, uh, so the town was gonna work cooperatively. And then something happened that they didn't do it, but since that's part of the agreement and part of the, the permitting by the planning board, um, it's, it's something we wanna hold on to.
Oh, hey, great. So we'll talk to town council about that also then, I guess.
I'm gonna direct him to, well, I'm assuming, based on what I'm hearing tonight, direct him to, to draft that letter, and then, um, add in that bit about extending the line.
Connection to the, uh, Dayton Water District on Somerset Avenue.
And then we'll send that over. Do you want to pursue discussions about the I M A? The intermunicipal agreement with Brockton?
I think it's a good idea to reach out to Brockton. Uh, and actually, if in fact, an agreement were to be negotiated, we would have terms and conditions in it relative to payments to the town, uh, probably at a fixed rate. If that agreement doesn't happen, but in the future, when they get through paying taxes, assuming they pay them through twenty-six, if they sell water to any community, we automatically tax them as a business, because now they're actually selling a product. So i- if, in, in long terms, looking out, they might be wiser to enter an agreement with Dayton.
Is it working now? Is it up and running? No.
Is what up and running?
Are they actually using it? Are they taking the salt out of the water and?
Aquar, I mean, uh, Brockton, that's their water source. That's, or that's a ju, well, weren't they, I'm sorry, power plant. They wanted them, for the Brockton Power Plant, they wanted Aquaria's water to cool the towers. This is literally a decade ago. This is a very long time ago. And then everything fell through, but I think that's back on the table. If they own Aquaria, they can sell water to the city, to the power plant.
Initially, they, they needed water for the city, and then it was, they fixed a lot of leaks and found out they didn't need as much water. And there were a number of communities along the way that said, we're interested. And then, um, we heard that they weren't pumping water, but the fact that the city is now saying, we're interested in buying Aquaria, there's a need.
I think it's for the pa, my thought is that it's for the power plant, because West Bridgewater doesn't get it. So the towns that Aquaria runs through up, up to that pipeline is one thirty-eight, and Easton, I don't believe, I could be misspeaking, but Easton has wells. Town of West Bridgewater has wells and water tanks. I don't know, I don't know about Rena, but I don't think so. I don't think they're getting their water from there.
No, I don't know.
It would be dedicated to Brockton's use.
I don't know of anybody that was, that was getting water, but I know there was a lot of interest along the way. Uh, and I know Wat, uh, Rainham is, I believe, has a water district, at least one, because the tank is out near forty-four and South Street, right there near Walmart, that big intersection. But, um, yeah, I, I think, uh, I think, uh, intermunicipal agreement is a good idea.
That's all I have. So we'll go forward with that.
Full business, second reading of the committee appointment policy. I noticed that there's been corrections.
Yes.
That's been taken care of. Any other changes that have been made?
So, um, wait. No, this is the correct one, right? Yeah, this is the correct one.
Yes.
So all of the, um, changes discussed last meeting have been updated. This is, this is it. Here it is. And we did send out communication to the chairman of, um, local boards, or we were about to, that, our process. And we have instituted that process as of late with various, uh, boards when their vacancies come up. So some of them have already experienced this process, so it's not a big surprise to them, but we did issue that communication.
Discuss asset tracking process.
We're back on this. So we took it to a department head meeting, and, um, after a lot of back and forth, I think various members of our team here are interested in asset tracking for different reasons. Um, but the request here tonight is that we'd like the Board of Selectmen to increase the threshold from, I think it was at two hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, um, for inventory purposes. I have been looking at various software, um, companies to help us with managing what we own, how old it is, when we bought it, what's the cost, you know, how much did it cost and all of that. Well, we have software currently that we have that can sort of do that part for us, and also have some maintenance records going with it. So as our town mechanic takes, in a cruiser and conducts an oil change, he can, you know, do that, or, um, a highway vehicle and make changes to it, um, as needed and repairs, so we can track just how much it's, one truck might be needing repair, and is it, do we need it for replacement? So for me and capital planning, I find it super valuable. The town accountant is looking at it for depreciation and fixed assets, so, um, this can't all be lumped together. So what we've decided after that meeting, if you agree as a board to establish a limit of a thousand dollars of items, uh, of a thousand dollars or more being tracked and, um, recorded, we would record what the purchase price was going forward, um, and if we know it from previous purchases, we'll add it. But going forward, we'll be able to chronologically put in those, that item, and then we would track depreciation value. You know, Chris, the town accountant, would take care of it on that end. I would use the ser, the software that we've got going on for capital planning and maintenance records, once that's up. And we would have our own sort of spreadsheets going forward to track it. And departments would be evaluating this and going through it every year, once it's up and running. And the highway department's in great shape. Um, I actually have his list of equipment, um, because of insurance. I needed that. So he's in good shape. Right now, it's really detailing all the items that are on an ambulance, um, and a fire truck, and amount of hose, and the fire department has his work cut out for him.
So in addition to that, though, we discussed all electronics-
Yes.
Would also be, uh, tracked.
Right, so we would do that with asset tag.
What the value is.
Right. If it's mobile.
iPads.
Yep, uh, laptops. I, this, uh, if it's mobile, it gets a tag, so that would be different software. Um, basically, it's, it's a tagging system. WASP is a type of this business that does that, and you scan in. And, um, what we have to research for the fire department is if we need the serial numbers for that, because if he takes the radios out, he just wants to do this once. I don't blame him. It makes a lot of sense, so we need a coordinated effort. Um, but really, it starts with this vote. It was a very confusing update, and I apologize. I was not, that was stream of consciousness and nada.
So you're asking that we go from two hundred to a thousand for inventory purposes? Is, does that include fixed assets, or does fixed assets have a different, a lower threshold?
It would include fixed assets.
Oh, so it's inventory and fixed assets?
Yes. And that's what I mean when I say, we're all sort of after different things. I'm looking at this as a capital planning pro, project. Um, and I'm also looking at, at it as, what do we own, and how much is it, and what, what is it gonna cost when we replace it? Where the town accountant's looking at it like depreciated value. Um, so-
Financial status.
We have different motives.
Right, and I'm looking at it to, to track all, uh, stuff that the ta, that the taxpayers have paid for.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we set the, uh, lower limit for assets and inventory purposes at one thousand dollars per unit, with the exception of electronics. All electronics will be included regardless of cost.
I'll step down and second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. New business, discussion of budget priorities for state budget.
We were kindly, um, contacted by Representative Hadad's office, asking if we have any priorities, um, which of course we do, uh, going forward in this state budget. And I have little projects that I think, um, we could ask for, but I wanted your feedback and anything that you might think of. Um, I had emailed you previously to get your, you know, start thinking about it, so we could have a discussion. It's a little tough without Select and Goulit's office here, um, but I can reach out to him, and maybe each of you provide one priority, and then there's three, and they can, um, see what they think is viable to pass to the House and Senate.
So one of the, could, one of those priorities, ask, let me know if I'm wrong, is, I've asked for a library study. Could that be one of them, or is that?
Sure.
We had hoped that that'd be part of the supplemental budget, but that didn't.
Right, I had asked for that a while ago. I had also asked for, um, which did make its way into the supplemental budget. It just wasn't funded. Um, actually, five hundred thousand dollars for replacement of the Pleasant Street Bridge. Um, we were so close, so I don't really wanna take, if we ask for something that's five hundred thousand dollars, I think it's only right to ask for one thing. Uh, but if you ask for a study, which is like maybe forty-five to fifty thousand, you could put on something else.
What is the study that's going on right now? Somebody's gonna contact me this week.
Oh, yeah. That is strategic planning for library services, unrelated to the building. How, I mean, however, you can't escape it. Like, you, you end up mentioning it, um, anyway, but that's their strategic planning process. The study-
Funded?
Yes, that's through their, the Board of Trustees have done that. They're, um, refreshing their strategic plan.
Okay.
And this group is coming in and helping us, um, take care of that, so.
All right.
This study that, uh, Select and Bichico is bringing up would be a new design study if we in fact went with a new library. The town of Dayton has already paid for a study, um, way back when, and that's what, the renovation project is a result of it. So our thinking was, let's not ask the town again for this, and see if the state could fund it. Um, but there's mixed reviews on that.
Well, if we get funding, will there also be a review of the original plans?
We have asked her that. If we, if we could somehow have the M B L C look at the original plans, and she doesn't think that they will, and neither does Jocelyn.
Original plans, you refer to-
The original new project, I'm sorry, right? The original new-
Are you talking about when we, if Fris went before the town, that's what you're talking about?
Approved, yes.
Is that the, the one where it was a new building?
I called it the Cape Cod Building. It was, it was white and, at shingles, and, uh, it was, again, gonna be out where, um, uh, prime time is. Uh, it would fit the neighborhood and everything else. My, my only thought is, since those plans are around, if we get funding, it would seem not to rehash the original one, but at least look at them, because what we know is that design, that appearance, uh-
Was acceptable.
It passed. It just didn't get funded. But, um, thinking about if in fact, the, uh, nine forty-nine Somerset Avenue could be a potential, um, location, with some of it lapping over onto, you know, uh, Town Hall Campus. That building, in its exterior design, would fit the neighborhood perfectly. Uh, but, but obviously, the inside, I'm sure lots of changes have happened since two thousand and, what, seven or eight, when it was voted on?
Stuff, uh, which, I'm sure is a ten.
All sorts of things, yeah.
I was actually thinking a fuel depot.
That's definitely a, a good one.
Um, it's a large cost, about three hundred thousand, um, but you can showcase how it's townwide, so it hits everybody.
Strategic planning, it's part of our M V P, is one of the things we pointed, one of the most- Also a strategic planning, it's part of our MVP, is one of the things we pointed, one of the most significant things we need is an internal, uh, fuel supply in a real emergency.
It's a vulnerability.
We have to leave town. There's no guarantee there's going to have any fuel out there for us, for anybody.
So I initially, uh, was opposed, opposed to a new fuel depot, quite frankly. However, as of our meeting the other week, was it last week?
Last, yes. It's all a blur.
That came up and it, and it really is a serious thing that we need to be concerned about. So I am now in favor of it. So what we have to decide is, and, and we need Dr. Z's input on it also, and you'll contact him, is could we go for the 45, $50,000 for the library or should we go for something that's going to be more money for the town? Fuel depot.
Pleasant Street Bridge.
Pleasant Street Bridge. I mean, if you think that we can't just go for several things, you think we need to go for one thing.
I think there's two, two avenues to explore. Maybe three little things, one from each of you, or one major thing. And what helps this town the most, I think, is alleviating a major problem. So Pleasant Street Bridge, for example, there's no way around it. That's expensive. I don't want to go to town meeting and say, hey, I need you to spend half a million dollars here. I want to be able to say, hey, I got a half million dollars. It's going to cost us 750. Can you chip in the 250? We, we, we went two-thirds of the way. I think that's more palatable and more acceptable. And if I didn't try, I don't feel that I'd be doing my job. So that's my kind of thought about it. However, I used to work at the state and, and requests were the gamut, from 2,000 to 200,000. So.
I would, not only because I'm working with, with Mr. Ferry and the chief, uh, and Chief McGee, um, I would go with number one, the fuel depot. However, um, my other thought is, like what happened with Complete Streets, it was back in, what, 2015, we were told, we were eligible for up to 450,000. And so we applied and we got the 38,000 to cover all the things we have to do. They said the first 50 had to be used for like local expenses. They gave us 38,000. That's the, what we've been doing. Um, drawing plans and having, uh, uh, the appraisal done. Then we kind of waited and waited for, are we going to get the money for the sidewalk project? And last year we applied and it, we didn't get it. But now we've got it. So I'm thinking if we go with the fuel depot this time, we're not going to give up on the Pleasant Street Bridge.
No.
And, um, I certainly, I'm not saying forget about the bridge permanently. If something happened to the bridge that were closed, it's not a major problem because we've got 138. You can get around it by going down, um, the lane, Money Cove Lane, or coming up and going up Money Cove Lane. Uh, so if it were, uh, there was no other way around it, um, and there's no homes close to it that would be affected because we also have Water Street onto Pleasant. But I certainly would want to go after it again.
Right.
Just like we did Complete Streets. Um. And maybe if they see that we have done, we're working on MVP and HMP. And what came out of that study, this is what is really being pointed to. So.
Well, you're making me think also, Brig Street, the bridge, the culvert, we have to get going and we're working on that. But, um, the Brig Street Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
That's another big one. Um, and I had another thought too. We've also have demonstrated that we can do a lot with a little. Um, Senator Bichico secured 25,000. We were able to match it. And now we have an animal shelter that's functional and can, um, do much more than we used to be able to do. So I was thinking about even asking for a small sum for a building project. Or this field back here, which is used every single day, making ADA compliant, fixing the stairs. Um, I mean, I have a slew of ideas for this field.
I've mentioned to, uh, uh, Mr. Reins also as a, um, CPC potential project. Because it's a historic.
Historic.
You know, and it's uses there.
It's also, it's also open space and recreation.
Right. My, my other thought is getting back to, uh, if, if, if we ask for money for the fuel depot, even if we don't get all of it, if, if, if it's a $350,000 project, we get a couple hundred thousand, thank you very much. Okay? Because then we can go back and explain to the people why we need the rest of the money and how important it is. But I think, I really think the selling point is the MVP and, uh, HMP and what came out of the work that they already funded, what came out of that study that was done, that we heard about last week.
Right. I mean, I, this is our problem. We have so many worthy projects. So, I mean, I, we're very lucky that they're reaching out in this way.
And when, um, so if we start a list and we have, let's say the fuel depot was on top. Uh, Picky Bridge Project, which one's next? Uh, probably Pleasant Street. Um, I know Mr. Ferry has talked about replacing the Center Street Bridge, right at Middle Street.
Um, I like Pleasant Street because we've already got it in once. Like it got through the Senate, uh, though a House Ways and Means Committee.
And we've already had the work done as far as, you know, engineering study and all that.
Oh, the type plan. So we know what we should do.
Exactly. What needs to be done. Right. Um.
So I can do, if you want to do the third one being the, um, not the third one. If you want to add the library study, we can just say, these are our three. Pick any. We'll be thrilled with the result. Um, thank you for reaching out. And then I'll get something from.
You should put the plug in though, that the top one came out of our study, which they funded.
Yeah.
We got grant money to cover that.
That's right.
I had a few comments.
Pleasant Street's also there too.
I had a few comments from people, um, who, when you talk about, uh, mitigation plans and hazard and all this other stuff, vulnerability, you know, that's something, that's something up there in Boston, you know. And so you hear about it and you don't pay any attention to it. But some people that actually, uh, saw the meeting or watched the rerun, all of a sudden it dawned on them. Oh, now they understood what it was about and understood why.
We're talking about it so much.
You know, you got grant money to do what? But now they understand what came out of it and understand the things that we have to look at as a town going forward. And better to look at them now before something lets go.
Right.
So I think that, that meeting last week was very informative.
I'm very, I'm glad. I'm very glad. I had a lot of, just meeting with them. I had a lot of enthusiasm about it and I think it's a great project. Um, and then somebody in another community told me that, um, they went after the grant for this last round because we had done it. So I love that we're inspiring other communities. Um, so that's, this is a big win. That's really good.
Well, the Center Street Bridge is also very important though, because if that goes.
Oh, that's a major link.
If that goes, then it, with Bridge, you know.
Center Street Bridge is the, I think this is right. Center Street Bridge is the detour if we do Brig Street over.
Yes.
So if, if they're both out, we're in trouble. Yes.
Then we're, we're in trouble.
Because then your connection to the upper end of Center is up pine and brook.
Right. And then emergency response is decimated at that point.
From 138 up, it's going to dead end at that bridge. That bridge, uh, that bridge is monitored, um, too, because of the water flow. When it's flood tide, that's a creepy bridge, in my opinion. Because of, it's even the things that measure the water levels, uh, that I think it's the, uh, it's federal, um, that monitors that, just like they monitor the, uh, bridge between Dayton and Totten on Warner Boulevard. But, yeah, that, that's an important one.
If we do Center Street Bridge, we also are going to be doing something with the water too. Jeff was telling us that our table that is.
Oh, yeah. They're putting in the, so if we open up the road, generally, we talk to Dayton Water District about their plans so that you're only opening up once and you don't, they don't, you know, they get to improve their infrastructure at the same time. They did that with, um, the Tremont Street Culvert. And I also, I don't mean to just do like large projects with this. If there was a, um, you know, a study or, you know, we were looking at the hydrology of the Segregated River, like we could do that. You can, you don't have to, it doesn't have to be a construction project. So.
If they're looking for.
Like an economic development plan, I think that would be helpful. If we could have somebody, you know, come down, money to come down and rate us on our economic vitality.
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I can literally think of projects for days. So do you want to pick some of these? And then I'll get one from Brett or, excuse me, Salkman Zagriffis.
If you, uh, make the list and then send it off to him and say, this is what was discussed. Hopefully Brett, you're watching us tonight.
It's putting him to sleep.
And we, we thank you, we thank you for not being a hex so we don't catch it. But, yeah, and let's see if, if he's got something or of what his opinion is on what we've just talked about.
Okay. And then bring it back for next meeting for votes?
Yeah, I think that's good. Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you to Senator, uh, excuse me, Representative Hadad's office for reaching out.
Highway Department Vehicle Surplus. Uh, we received a letter from, uh, Tom Ferry. Uh, please consider our 2,000 Ford cab and chassis surplus. This vehicle, though it's not the oldest, but has served as well, a new replacement truck has arrived and it's ready for service. And he provided us with some information on that, uh, vehicle. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Ferry, Superintendent of Streets, and designate the 2,000 Ford cab and chassis as surplus property and can be sold at public auction or private bid, sealed bid.
I'll step down a second. That motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. We have received word that, uh, Vicky Piazza has resigned from the Industrial and Development Commission. Uh, we want to thank her for all the work that she's done in the past. She was the chairperson for a number of years and, uh, she did some good work. So.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation of Vicky Piazza as, from the Industrial and Development Commission with thanks and appreciation for her work over the years.
I'll step down a second. That motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Award bid for ADA self-evaluation transition plan. It's Mike.
Oh, sorry. We're going to say the same thing. Um, so I had previously reported to you and gave a recommendation in preparation for tonight's meeting, uh, in your packet. However, um, I had misread the proposal and the price was actually of this person, of this company I was going to recommend was actually 20,000 more than I originally thought. So that far exceeds, um, our allotted funds for this project. Um, my RFP did, my bid documents did say that the grant award was the sole funding source. So it is actually my recommendation to throw this bid out and rebid. Um, unfortunately, that proves as a tougher timetable, but I think we can still make it work. Um, in some conversations with Jonathan Gale, the ADA coordinator, um, Jeff at the Mass Office of Disability. I had some technical questions to ask him. I can't, um, lower this more than, than what we, it can't be lowered to what we have, um, appropriated for, uh, for this project. So I will be rebidding, uh, if you agree.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, what's the term I want to use? Reject all bids for the ADA transition plan slash self-evaluation and request new bids.
I'll step down a second. That motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. We're going to begin the budget process. We have a few budgets to review.
So the good news is we're starting out light. Most of these are level funded or they went down. Um, we have it listed here on the agenda and your budget books are here for you.
I do want to thank, uh, LeAnn and Karen for all the hard work. They, this, these books really came out great. I know we're going to have additional stuff put in this.
That's why I get the big binder.
My, uh, but this is, this is very nice. Now, the print is small, but it's, it's my problem, not everybody's problem. So, uh, I will struggle through.
No, I think it's, it's my just preference for eight and a half by 11. I, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I'm okay with that. Uh, I did bring a magnifying glass if I needed it.
So I did, I tried. I had that in mind. I would eliminate certain unnecessary columns, um, but it is. So the first one is town meeting because of minimum wage increases and, um, I was going off data of only, um, I call it one and a half town meetings. I wanted to be conservative. This estimate, um, of going up by $200 for minimum wage increases, I believe is very conservative. And this could be reduced, um, to a level funded if we were looking for ways to reduce the budget at the end of, you know, towards the end of that process.
I'm okay with what's presented to us. The fiscal year, uh, 2020 was $3,800. This is an increase of $400. We have to take into consideration, uh, the increase in the minimum wage. So that goes up to $4,200. So, uh, it's a 10.53% increase.
Wait. Oh, I'm sorry. Total. I'm sorry. Total. Yeah.
So, um, I'm okay with that. I'm sure what your position is, Mrs. Golub.
Where, uh, yeah, I, I don't have any questions on this. Should we wait on these? I mean, if, if we move, if we move to approve them tonight, we still got to go to FinCom and they could get changed again. So what, how should we just do this?
Generally what I do is I take your votes and I put them in a column for, it says Board of Selectmen recommendations.
Okay.
And then when the finance committee sees the budget, they see this plus that column, Board of Selectmen recommendations.
Okay.
Um, you've been in this practice that you attend their meetings and you make changes. Um, but we also can review towards the end when you have collectively everything in front of you and recommend reductions based upon what our levy limit is and what all of the requests are.
Okay. So, uh, in following what we've done before, I don't have any questions on this one. So, um, I'll hold on that one. And we move through these until we have one that has a question. For example, if there is a question on 132, we'll stop there. I will go back and make a motion to approve, uh, Departments 113, 14, 122, right up to that point. So we'll do them in blocks so we don't have a gazillion motions.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. All right.
And what will happen after the finance committee takes a look at it, it comes back to us and we can further review it. I believe the last time they made some reductions and we had approved those reductions.
That's totally up to you if you want to do it that way.
So when I went to the town, the town knew that the finance committee had a position as well as.
All right. Or if we're adamant that we want $500 for something and they say 400, the 500 goes on the warrant because it can be reduced at town meeting floor and they can get up there and say, we're only recommending 400 for this reason. So, yeah, so we get some options. I don't have any questions on 114.
Um, I just wanted to say that I submitted this because we don't have a moderator right now and I just threw in a 2% increase. I don't know what you want to do there.
I'm okay with that. I think that that is reasonable. I know we don't have a town moderator. We have an election coming up. So.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't have any questions.
It's a 2% increase.
The Dayton Trails Committee has submitted a request for funding. I'm unsure whether they're looking for their own budget or if they're fine just having the line in the selectmen's budget, which is 122. It's $3,900. You should have the documents in your file right after 122. Is that there? It's a writ, a right, there it is. It's a write-up, right there.
Hold on. Does it in?
It's under 5343. It says Communication-Dyton Trails Committee.
Okay.
They have some money in there. This, this fiscal year, they got a little bit of a late start, but you, they've come back and done some work and, um, they're actually holding a public forum in April. So they're rocking and rolling. So their increase, or they're requesting an increase. Right now they're at 1,600. They're requesting 3,900. It's unclear to me whether they're seeking their own budget. My personal recommendation, or professional recommendation, excuse me, uh, my personal thought is that they should stay under the Board of Selectmen budget. They don't need a separate one for them themselves.
Do you know what they're thinking of? DCR Suites Noel proposed lot? That's a state park.
Yes. Um, I think that's the parking, they want to put in a parking lot behind the 1712 property so that you would park and then.
Oh, you could walk.
Walk the trail. So they've had preliminary conversations with the planning board about that.
So that's on town owned land?
Yes.
That they're talking about? Okay.
Well, I'm glad that they're motivated and they want to make some, uh, changes and that they're doing some, uh, some good work. I would like to keep it under the Board of Selectmen's budget.
That's fine with me.
But I, I am not opposed to, uh, their increase. They had been here a couple of weeks ago and kind of explained some of this to us and, uh, I like what they're doing. I think it's, a lot of residents in town can benefit from what they're doing. So.
And, and, um, I think they're going to come in under budget on this first one because they said they've gone to BP and got a, a very good, um, proposal on what it is they want to do. So, um, so on Department 122, I already said that I don't support increasing the, uh, hours for the administrative assistant. However, uh, I still don't support that, but I am going to leave this in here because I already talked about that. So, um, that's going to be in the group that I, I, uh, put under that motion when I make it. So. So we can move to Town Administrator unless you get something else.
Yep.
Just to clarify, so you do want to keep them under the Board of Selectmen and to raise that line to 3,900?
I'm in favor of that.
Uh, yeah, yeah, and I think there'll be more discussion and when I hear info, I hear what the Finance Committee says.
So we'll plan to.
We've got another shot. For right now, everything we're doing right now is to send to the FinCom. That's why I'm not gonna.
So I'm gonna flag this, obviously it's your budget, so it'll go back, but flag this budget for reconsideration after the Finance Committee meets on it.
And it's the interest, it's being in the best interest of the Trail Committee to attend the Finance Committee meetings to explain what they're seeking. So we're leaving the increase in hours for the administrative assistant.
Yeah, because it's gonna come back anyhow.
Right, that was voted two to one anyway, so it goes in there, but it may change when the Finance Committee sees it. Selectmen's Graphus asked to hold Budget 124 until he could attend.
All right, so that's on hold. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion. Hold, all right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, initially approve Departments 113, 114, and 122 for submission to the Finance Committee for review.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. We need a motion to hold 124 then, or we can?
Just, I agree.
Okay, we'll just continue.
Okay, Finance Committee and the Finance Committee.
We probably should table it.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion. We table action on Department 124 based on Selectmen's Graphus request.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Finance Committee, it's level funding, I believe.
Yes.
I have no concerns with the Finance Committee budget.
Same goes for the Reserve Fund, level funded.
So just on the Reserve Fund, so we haven't spent any of that money yet.
Knock on wood.
That's something that we would, as the fiscal year goes on, that we may have to spend, yep.
Well, depending on, generally in March, I take more of a fervent look at it because you have some things that aren't spent yet. The Parks and Rec Commission gets started in late spring. Tom Ferry and all of his work gets started in late spring. So we generally look at that and we try to do interdepartmental transfers through May fir, after May 1st.
Yep.
First, to do that first before going to Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Town Accountant sees an overall decrease because our longtime town accountant had separated from employment last year. There is still an anticipation of retirement, which is reflected here. And then he provided plenty of notes about, you know, where his increases were coming from. But overall, this is decreasing.
It's, it's also a decrease because it looks like there's a 16.58, if I'm reading that correctly, decrease in the, the budget from the previous fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yes. But the, I mean, that's substantial, like, we won't get that next year, but there was a retirement, the benefits come out, yeah.
What about, you said there's a potential retirement, are there retirement benefits that need to be budgeted or are they here?
He has them here.
They're in that line?
They are.
5106?
5155. There's a note next to it that says 15,000 for Linda's accumulated sick time and unused vacation.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay, I see it.
We had, we had, the previous town accountant had actually budgeted for that last year as well, not knowing. So this would actually likely dec, I'm wrong, this will likely decrease next year as well if that retirement occurs.
Okay.
Okay, next is the Treasurer.
Lord of Assessors.
Lord of Assessors.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I even, like, passed it. I'm sorry, Carol. They have their increases here. Most of their expenses are level, if not going down.
So those increases in salaries, do we have any input in that at all, or is that?
You always have your recommendations. Elected official salaries are generally set by the Finance Committee because the Finance Committee is what, you know, they're bringing a budget to the town at town meeting. It's technically, it's their budget. But you can weigh in through your recommendations and through your conversations with the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I tend to think it should be 2%, not the three and a half or 3% increase. See that, the first two lines, the chairman and the, the members?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we've been doing, I thought.
Right, and the, you know, the, the other employees are only getting like one and a half percent, a little bit more than one and a half percent increase, so.
Well, to be fair on that, that's exactly, so that is, I don't, I think that's probably accounting for like extra days and stuff.
So will the chairman and members' salaries reflect whatever comes out of collective bargaining?
Not necessarily. This is a major issue I'm running into, which I, we need to correct. There's no personnel bylaw. So a lot of the non-union folks go, it's sort of like, okay, well, what, what union contract fits that department? Or what's been done in the past and there leads, it leaves a lot open. So one of my interests is to establish a personnel bylaw.
I don't, I don't have a problem with department head asking for, let's assume that there is a contract and there's 2% in there. If the department head thinks that more should be given to the non-union and they propose that, that's where, I think that's worth discussing. My concern is that where we have a contract open, I don't think we should be listing 3.5 and 3% this early in the game because you're telling the union, that's all set. They're gonna get that anyhow.
So this didn't come from?
No, no, I know that. That's what I'm saying. What my suggestion is in this case is put these at 2%, both of them. Because I think these are subject to changes since we've got an open contract. And I think this is one we should come back to, flag this one for, come back to. Let's put it, let's hold it. Let's put it on hold.
Thank you. It helps me which place I'm putting that.
Okay, put it on hold. Because the contract is.
Up in the air.
Yeah, and I think once that gets settled, and I don't think it's sending a wrong message or any message to the union on where that's gonna all come out. And regardless of what comes out of it, it's, it's hold so that the, the department head, the elected members can come in and talk to us. And, and they're gonna be before the FinCom anyhow. So I make a motion that we approve Departments 131, 132, and 135 and send it on to the Finance Committee as proposed.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table action on Department 141 until the next meeting.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Town Treasurer.
This sees a decrease in personnel. We had a change in personnel. Again, a longtime employee retired, so the new person starting in doesn't have the same longevity and steps. So you'll see a decrease there overall for personnel expenses. And this budget is pretty slim when it comes to the expenses. She does have some professional technical for bond counsel and other types of borrowing items and financial questions that come up and arise, so pretty much the same. Most of this is level. Some of it went down.
Okay, I'm. I'm gonna recommend what I just did for the Assessor's Office, that this top one be at 2% until, because the same people are involved, contract being open. So. I'm gonna do it for the town clerk too, that the, that salary line be held until we see where we're going with the negotiations.
So Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, and Town Collector.
Yeah.
So hold it or set it at 2%?
Actually, the bud, the budget is on hold and I, what I just wrote in is a note, 2%. And it's all related to having that contract open. That's not a final number. And they'll all meet with the FinCom anyhow. So.
So you can make a motion on all three.
Yep, okay. Are there any other things in those three budgets, which would be 145, 146, and 161, that we need to discuss other than the fact that we got a contract open?
My same comments apply for Town Collector as well. And for the Town Clerk, most of her increases are in a different budget. So for, for this one, it's, it's slim pickings as well, mostly level funded and it goes down in a couple of them.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we hold on Departments 145, 146, and 161 salary lines because we have the union contract open.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Tax title foreclosure.
This is level funded from last year. If you remember, we lowered it last year.
Okay, so we got, wait a minute, we got Town Council.
Goes on.
So I didn't put Town Council on because you've previously voted on that when you vote to establish it. If you'd like to review it again, let me know and I'll add all those budgets to the schedule.
Okay, no, it's just that it's listed and I just want to mention Department 151. I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure I hit everything on this list.
Okay, we're just not posted for 151 tonight? You're gonna hit everything on that list as we go forward.
Right.
With the budget review.
And the same thing with 155, data processing.
That is a moving target.
So you don't want any, us to do anything on either of those tonight?
Not tonight, no.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion. We put a hold on Departments 151 and 155 for future discussion. That's Town Council data.
You don't, it's not on the agenda.
So we don't need a motion.
What you're operating off of is the whole master list for the, that document right there. I like that you're keeping track of it because that's exactly what I'm doing in my office. But we don't have those two budgets you just mentioned on our agenda tonight.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so you don't even need a motion for them.
All right, okay.
So tax title foreclosure is level funded.
162 is where you see, this is elections. No surprise, we have a presidential election this year. So this is early voting as well as the additional elections that take place September, November.
Right, so it, and it's the early voting for the primary in September?
Yes.
So this is why this budget is being increased 40, 40%?
Significantly.
Yep.
Okay.
It's out of our hands.
I don't have anything on that one.
Registration. Why is it going up 17% for me? Oh, increase in postage, I'm sorry. It's funny that that one increase makes it, it's not funny, but this is such a small budget that that one increase makes it look like.
Yeah, it's going up 1,000. Something else, street listing is going down $100. So the increase from previous fiscal year or the current fiscal year is $900.
I don't have any questions, no matter what.
The.
Okay, now we're gonna flip to the back of the.
So I go, okay, nope. I looked at something that's not on the agenda, so I'm gonna skip right to the 710.
So 710, 751, and 752 are all on the same sheet. They're small budgets.
You know what, before we get there, I'm gonna do 162 and 163. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Departments 162 and 163 and send them on to the Finance Committee.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. So we're going to 710.
That's a giant step.
Yes. So this is our debt, which right now is the police station. The real good news is that the big payments have already been completed by free cash and have not hit the tax rolls. What we have done in the previous two fiscal years is budget for them. And then when free cash comes in, make the payment through free cash so that it doesn't impact the tax rate. And we've got the two largest payments under our belt already, so that's good news.
So we've been fortunate the past couple of years and hopefully.
So even though we say, okay, send us on to the FinCom, there's a chance this may, if we have money, we may take it out of free cash?
Well, we do the, we do that payment in the fall, so I wouldn't recommend taking it out because what if we don't have that free cash? Then we're short our bond payment, which is.
No, what I'm saying is we have it in the budget.
Oh, yes.
But we're gonna talk about this some more, so before we get to the final budget, we may make some changes.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have any questions on that one.
Nope.
710, all right.
So it, principal and interest, and there's no interest on short-term debt, so that's all set. And then another big jump to 9/11, 9/14, 9/15, and 9/16. I apologize. They're all on the same page. Again, 9/19 did not make it to this agenda. I apologize for that. So we'll see that next meeting. So just, if you would, make a note on your, your documents there. That last budget, which is OPEB, our favorite, will be talked about next week.
What about 9/12?
9/12 I kept separate because it's not, it's, it's workers' comp and I wanted to keep that away from.
All right, so that's coming up.
So we'll address that at the next, our next meeting, most likely.
Well, you've already talked about this one, but you'll bring this up. I'll do, I have my meeting with the insurance company in March. After that takes place, I'll have more, more of a handle on final numbers, but.
Okay, so we're gonna do, we did 9/11, 9/14, 9/15, and 9/16.
Yes.
That's what we're finishing up tonight?
Yes, these all come from the Treasurer and they're estimates based upon who's gonna sign on to our health insurance and as well as health insurance increases through our health insurance group, which is the South Shore Health Insurance Group. And it's a sizable increase, but health insurance goes up.
Right, and this is out of our hands and this is something we have to, have our employees have.
We go to meetings and we participate.
Than they are negotiations. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve budgets for Departments 710, 751, 752, 911, 914, 915, and 916 and send them on to the FinCom.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
It wasn't so bad.
No.
It was the first one.
No, we're all done.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's because Dr. Z isn't here.
I was just thinking, that's probably the reason.
No, these are the, these are simple ones. A lot of them aren't, you know.
We've got some bigger budgets coming up that we're gonna be speaking.
Nah, it's him.
Selectmen's report. I don't have anything to report.
No, I said I'd do it for the next regular meeting. That's the MMA thing, so.
No correspondence, no acknowledgements. I'll entertain a motion to accept a review of the minutes for the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of February 12, 2020. I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes for the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of January 22, 2020.
So moved.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 34A-20 in the amount of $98,373.94 payroll and 34B-20 in the amount of $371,386.35 accounts payable be approved.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. There is still no public here, so we have no public input. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll step down a second, that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Thank you, Cable.
Dr. Z, it's 8:12.